Call the meeting of the Hammond Common Council for June twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. To order our rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all.
I ask that we have a moment of silence for the loss of two people that we've had in the city over since we've last met, and that is Sergeant Tom Sawyer, the Hammond Police Department, and Park Board Member Art Peschke. Katrina.
Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, we just come singing saying thank you, Lord God. Lord God, for the two individuals that have passed away, Lord God, we just ask that you continue to cover their families, Lord God, continue to cover even everyone in this city, Lord God. Lord God, as we are now in the summer months, Lord God, continue to keep each and every person safe. We thank you for everything that you're doing, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Present.
Spatelli.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show, nine present, zero absent, eight in person, and one by Zoom. Item number three, Mayor's address. Now, Mayor, while you approach, just wanted to let you know that we have a Munster High School student here observing our meeting and how government works. His name is Shari Bitla.
Hey, bud. That's it. Welcome to Hammond.
So.
That's it. Thanks, Councilman.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for letting me address the council. Let's go over what we did for the last couple of weeks and update you on some previous items that we spoke about during this address. Start off, the most defining thing in the last two weeks unfortunately was the passing of ad's number four, four, eight. Sergeant Tom Sawyer, Hammond Police Officer, passed away at the age of fifty-three, COVID-related death. If you don't mind, I'm going to go through his biography real quick. Tom Sawyer was hired by the Hammond Police Department on December eighteenth, nineteen ninety-seven, and was promoted to Sergeant in two thousand and twelve. During Sergeant Sawyer's tenure with the Hammond Police Department, he has served in the Patrol Division, front desk sergeant, field training officer. He was assigned to the Community Affairs Division as part of the Neighborhood Response Team and the Criminal Investigations Division as a detective. For twelve years, Tom has performed the duties in the Hammond Police Jail. Tom received the Purple Heart Award from the Hammond Police Department after sustaining serious bodily injury while apprehending a mentally ill subject on the street. Tom Sawyer was a sergeant in the United States Air Force as well. He served in the Security Forces. He assisted when called during Hurricane Katrina. He was stationed in Korea and Germany and completed three tours to Iraq and Kuwait. Sergeant Sawyer was described by his fellow officers as a man of faith who loved and adored his wife and his children and was excited about the possibility of retirement and moving on to the next chapter in his life. Tom was always willing to help when needed. Tom was a man of strong religious faith. He loved his job and his country. The loss to the Hammond Police Department feels is great. The gratitude owed to Tom for his service here and abroad is huge. He will forever hold a special place in our hearts and will truly be missed. Tom is survived by his wife and his two children. We had a full police honors funeral last week for him. It was unfortunately for me, the first, I mean unfortunately for us, the first one I've experienced as your mayor. It was very, you know, humbling and impressive and sad. He had two, you know, kids, you know, teens slash maybe young twenties, fifty-three years old from COVID. We were, every Hammond Police Officer was at this funeral. It was in Crown Point, which made me wonder who's covering our streets right now for update to the council. The Lake County Sheriff's Office assumed responsibility for the streets of Hammond during that, and I appreciate Oscar Martinez, the Lake County Sheriff, for helping with that, as well as Mayor Spiebar, the Whiting, Indiana mayor, who had the Whiting Police Department covering the northern part of our city. But that was very sad and is a reminder, you know, we're still in the middle of a pandemic. I don't want to get into whether or not Sergeant Sawyer was vaccinated because it doesn't matter unfortunately, but I just want to remind people that we have these vaccines out there that are effective and safe. Only forty-five percent of our city employees are vaccinated, and that's higher unfortunately than the rate of our Hammond residents. So I want to remind everybody, you know, unfortunately, we're still experiencing deaths from this horrible disease and the vaccines are plenty. So on to more brighter news. On Saturday, June nineteenth, we held our first annual Juneteenth celebration at MLK Park on a beautiful day in MLK Park. This was the second year in a row the city recognized Juneteenth. As you'll remember, last year we passed a resolution, the council, and we gave the employees a day off. We were pretty unique in that regard. Well, the second year, we also gave the employees a day off and the federal government made a national holiday. So we were ahead of the curve on that. We also, last week, during Sergeant Sawyer's funeral, we had a very important meeting in Indianapolis that I could not attend even by, you know, by Zoom. This was a meeting with the Indiana Gaming Commission in regards to a divestiture order from the Indiana Game Commission against the new owners of Hammond Horseshoe Casino, which is Eldorado, the company Eldorado. Eldorado purchased all of the casinos in Indiana from Caesars. They had five casinos, and unbeknownst to them, at the Indiana Gaming Commission meeting of, I don't know, six months ago, the Indiana Gaming Commission ordered Eldorado to divest themselves of three of the licenses. And because of previous promises they made in regards to the two Racinos that they owned, they had to keep those together, which basically the IGC was telling them, not only did they have to sell Southern Indiana Boat, a boat in Terre Haute, the new boat in Terre Haute, they also had to get rid of Hammond Horseshoe. And Eldorado didn't want to get rid of Hammond Horseshoe. The thing that, where it concerns us is Eldorado is the owner of the Caesars loyalty program, which is a big reason why people gamble at Hammond Horseshoe, is because when you gamble at Hammond Horseshoe, you get credits with Caesars Vegas, and you can go to any Caesars property in the United States of America. And the thing that was scary about the divestiture order is if Eldorado has to sell it, fire sale prices, it could have been just some bargain operator that bought it. Jack's Casino or something like that comes along, and Jack's Casino has the biggest casino in the Midwest, the biggest casino in the state of Indiana, our casino, and Jack's Casino may not have a loyalty rewards program, and Jack's Casino may not even be a great operator. They just bought it at a fire sale price because the IGC ordered the sale. After a few months of Eldorado's ownership, they installed a new CEO at Hammond Horseshoe named Catherine Jenkins. She's excellent. She's done a great job. I haven't noticed even a bit of difference. The old CEO, Dan Nita, has been moved up to like a regional role. He oversees multiple boats now. He's still stationed in Hammond, but he is not the CEO of Hammond Horseshoe anymore. It's Catherine. I've been nothing but impressed. I haven't even noticed a difference, and I don't know if any of you would have noticed a difference either. And it got to the point where I wrote a letter on behalf of Eldorado asking the Indiana Gaming Commission to rethink that divestiture order. And obviously, Eldorado wanted to keep the Hammond Horseshoe, and lucky for all of us, last week during the IGC meeting, by a four-to-one vote, they reversed that divestiture order, which means Eldorado could keep Hammond Horseshoe Casino. We're still going to be part of the loyalty rewards program, and I feel good about our ownership group because we're competing with Hard Rock, which is a big name. Eventually, Chicago's going to build a new casino. We'll be competing with them, and we want the best name behind us. It's the best casino in the state of Indiana, and I want the best ownership group, and I think the IGC made the right decision. So I think that's huge for us. And anyway, that's in regards to that. If you have any questions, you can interrupt me too, by the way, obviously. Mayor, June twenty-third, we had Mayor's Night Out at the Sportsplex. Councilman Barry was hosting that day. We had quite a lively discussion. We also had State of the City last week, formal State of the City. I have an informal State of the City next week before the Lakeshore Chamber of Commerce, but this was actual written speech. Had a lot of members of my team work real hard to get that put together. I know the council got a copy of it. Tomorrow, big meeting with the Federal Railroad Administration. That's something that we had a meeting with about a month ago. The Federal Railroad Administration is the agency, federal government agency in charge of regulating railroads, and obviously, we have a lot to complain about. So this is our second meeting with the FRA, and I'm hoping that we get a lot of cooperation out of this. This lady is based out of Chicago, and she seems real sympathetic towards our cause. So, you know, we'll see how that goes. I'll obviously update you at our next meeting. Previously covered topics, updates, the closure of the Franciscan Hammond Hospital. I've had one phone call in the last couple of weeks that I haven't reported to you previously. This was with the CEO of Methodist Hospital, who has a big interest in the city of Hammond, which is encouraging. Special Events Committee's been hard at work, obviously, with the summer coming up. Next week, well, next weekend, the weather's supposed to be nice on the Fourth of July, and we have our citywide fireworks display set to go from six different locations across the city. The closest location to here where you could observe it is MLK Park. We tried to strategically think about where each of the launch locations were across the city so that theoretically, anybody in our city, any of the thirty thousand homes in our city, could go in the backyard and watch a fireworks display. So that's what we're going for. Excuse me. We did this last year during the pandemic, and this is round two. So we'll see how it goes. Festival of the Lakes is set in stone. Everything's ready to go. To go through again real quick, Tuesday, well, actually, Saturday before Festival of the Lakes, so I guess that would be the eleventh. Saturday, the eleventh, we start off with the five K run called the Roadie Run. It's part of the Gold Cup Series, which is really cool. We've never been part of the Gold Cup Series before, because every year when we do our fest, there was a horrible conflict with our running race with another race that's run out of South Lake County. So we can never get Gold Cup designation, which is important. If you have a Gold Cup designation, you'll get like an automatic extra fifty to a hundred runners. So we're Gold Cup this year. It's the week before, it's the week before the fest starts, but we're, you know, it kicks off everything. So it starts on July eleventh. It's important for the employees because they run against the mayor, and if they beat me, they get a day off. So you'll see a lot of employees in really good shape right now because they're all running and trying to beat me, which shouldn't be too hard. Tuesday, July thirteenth, is Old Dominion Country Night. Wednesday, July fourteenth, is a change. We have Twista opening for Busta Rhymes, opening for Nelly. I updated you previously on that. Thursday, July fifteenth, the band Limp Bizkit. Friday, July sixteenth, we start with the Festival Golf Outing, Festival of the Lakes Golf Outing, the scramble takes place at the Last March Golf Course. That evening, we have REO Speedwagon, followed by fireworks. Saturday, July seventeenth, we have something new that we're trying this year is a gospel breakfast, where we're getting a really good breakfast, by the way. I think it's five dollars.
Is that accurate?
Five dollars. If you show up, it starts at like seven-thirty, and then we'll have music that goes basically until ten o'clock. With a good breakfast for five bucks and gospel music, I think it's going to be a great time. I hope you guys can make it. It's our first annual. I know our Ministerial Alliance and our Special Events Committee is working real hard on making this special, so I hope that you guys could show up and show support for our first annual event. Saturday, we also have Sammy Hagar and the Circle. That's important. Sammy Hagar and Friends was the initial announcement. Sammy Hagar and the Circle is important because of the bandmates he's playing with, means that they're only going to play Led Zeppelin, Van Halen, and Sammy Hagar, which is Led Zeppelin, Van Halen, Sammy Hagar. That's the Circle, followed by a fireworks display that night. On Sunday, July eighteenth, at the Hammond Marina, we have what I refer to as Polka Mania, sponsored by the Mohawks. It's a great event at the Hammond Marina. Sunday, we also have the Hot Rod and Custom Car Show that takes place near the fest ground. So Polka Fest is going on at the Marina. Hot Rod and Custom Car Show is going on at the Pavilion, and of course, Latin Night, one of our big nights every year, Los Tucanes de Tijuana plays Sunday night for the final day of the fest. Pre-sale tickets, we've already set a record this year, four hundred thousand dollars in pre-sales, which is, we used to, that used to not even be a revenue source, and now it's a major revenue source, and we still got a couple of weeks to go. So I am hoping that we could hit six hundred thousand in ticket sales before, maybe even more, which is, that's a high bar we're setting right now. So this year's lineup seems to be taking off. Councilman Barry and I have been dealing with some pushback from the neighborhood that it was affected by recent closures. We mentioned that we shut off because of a survey we performed in the neighborhood south of Highland, north of Hundred and Sixty-Fifth, west of State Line, excuse me, east of State Line and west of Holman. If you live in that area, we sent a survey around to each house, asking about the traffic changes. I've done this in different parts of the city. Sometimes these turn out well, sometimes they turn out not so well. This one turned out very well. Literally eighty percent supported the traffic changes, you know, and I've had a couple of losses across the city doing this as well. And sometimes they come back fifty-fifty, sometimes they come back less than. This was closer to eighty percent. So obviously, the neighborhood strongly supported it. However, as Councilman Barry will probably tell you, that doesn't mean everybody loves what we've done, which is basically, we shut off the State Line. The only way you can go west to east across State Line now is if you're on Highland or Hundred and Sixty-Fifth. Obviously, taking away the cut-through traffic that's going through the neighborhood to get from State Line to Holman. So we are in the process now of engineering a permanent design change for that area over there. Right now, it's not very pretty. It's blocked up with temporary construction barriers, but we put them up after the last report to the Hammond City Council. And that's my report to you, unless there's any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Councilman Kalwinski.
Hi, Councilman. Any update, follow-up with Cargill?
You know, Councilman, I was going to put that in here, but I didn't want to open that Pandora's box because I've gotten, gotten hardly anything lately. I'm not sure if you're getting them still, but I know the last time I talked to Cargill, it was a couple of weeks ago. They said, we pretty much, we're pretty sure we know what's causing the noise. We're going to turn it on temporarily today to verify that that's what's causing the noise. So if you get complaints, we know it's, it sounds to me like they know exactly what it is. Councilman Mark, I haven't received a complaint in City Hall or on my cellphone. They have my, a lot of the people in the neighborhood have my number, and as soon as I say this, I'm going to get twenty. That's why I didn't put it in my report, but I have not received a complaint, which tells me that Cargill figured it out, hopefully. Have you heard anything different?
No.
I was going to put that in here. I didn't want to open that box, though, so.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman.
Does anybody else have anything for the mayor? Again.
Thank you, guys. Dan, did you have one? Sure.
Councilman Kalwinski.
You know, one of the meetings the last few weeks, you mentioned the beginnings of cleanup action for the Robertsdale area near Whiting Metals. What can you tell us?
I was going to do a cleanup right on State Line because I was driving across the State Line one day, and it was, this is probably March, and it was, it looked really bad. And I was like, man, it's like the entryway to our city, and I've been looking a lot over there because we're talking about a real beautification, like shielding kind of project, but the litter was out of control. So I came back, and I think we had Mayor's Night shortly after that, and I mentioned it at Mayor's Night, like, I want to do a cleanup over on State Line because it looks horrible. Well, my staff took it personally, Port Authority in particular, and they cleaned the heck out of it. So like, we're literally planning a cleanup, and then I drove by there, and it's sparkling clean, which thankfully, our staff jumped on it, but we were going to do that ourselves. So we're still evaluating that. We don't have a place picked out. If you have ideas, we'd be open to it, Councilman, because I think I can get quite a few people.
This is private property, but the Marina Development, the Marina Walmart area, it's notoriously unkept. Very management group does not clean it often enough, and there's litter thrown everywhere in the complex.
Thank you.
That's a private issue, and that's probably a code issue.
It is a code issue, but I don't think it's, I'm not opposed to cleaning up if that's the area we want to focus on. I'm not opposed to that.
Focus on that.
Right.
With the public. I'm asking maybe code to look at it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Periodically, they do look there, and it's better for a while.
I know. It's like that in my part of the city too, Councilman. We have a development over there. It's notorious for like, let it go, and then they'll clean it up, and then they'll let it go.
So I wasn't really referring to the cleanup. I was asking about the Whiting Metals and neighborhood and what's being done.
The lead situation? Thank you. Good question. We have a firm, in fact, I'm sure you'll notice, claims have been going to a firm called Environment Forensics that's working right now coordinating between IDEM, US EPA, and ourselves. It's a weird situation, Councilman Mark, because we want to clean, so there's hundred-plus properties and around Whiting Metals, you know, basically, you know, right around George Lake, north basin of George Lake, there's a couple hundred homes in that area with about a hundred, give or take, that have minor lead issues, meaning lead's high enough to be concerning, but it's not like we ran into East Chicago. So it's not like top of US EPA's list. It's not top of HSTEM's list, but everybody in that whole neighborhood knows about it because US EPA cleaned up a dozen properties, and then everybody else is just sort of waiting. Now, the US EPA would rather see us file a super fund. I think IDEM would rather see us file super fund as well. So that's an option, and if we filed for a super fund, the federal government, presumably, we would pay for the entire cleanup. We would be responsible for hardly anything locally. Okay? However, that's a long process. So if we decided to go that route and declare a super fund in that part of the city, you know, the people that live there would be living in a super fund site, and the people that own homes there, the hundred or so homeowners, try to sell their home, oh, by the way, it's a super fund site. Oh, you know, I was going to pay a hundred and fifty, now I'm going to pay you a hundred or less. Councilman Dan, would that affect your market value?
Definitely.
So it's a weird situation we find ourselves in where we're sort of being persuaded not to go it alone, because we're sort of lucky. Using the federal government's ridiculously inflated number, when they were doing properties, they were doing them for fifty grand each. Okay? So if we even used their real inflated figures, I think if we followed everything they did, we could do it cheaper than they did. So we're thinking, what if we do everything? We saw what US EPA did with the properties. So what if we follow the same specs they followed, and we did it at our own cost? Maybe we could do it for thirty grand per property. And if they would certify it, once we did the work, if they would certify it, would you rather go this route? And we made the determination that it could cost us three to five million dollars to go this route, but we'll get it done within a few years. Whereas going US EPA, going super fund, this could be a decade-long process. This could be a two-decade-long process. So like, when you're talking about three to five million dollars, I think it opens the door for us to think about doing it ourselves. We have a neighbor, our neighbor Whiting, that was polluted by this polluter. We're talking even before any of us were born. Whiting was getting polluted by Hammond lead, which is not a neighborly thing to do, but it happened. And prevailing winds in that part of the city are north, northeast. So when smoke goes up in the air from these factories, it would take it right over Whiting, and lead is heavy, and it would fall like snow right in Whiting for decades. Whiting was getting lead snow from this plant. Of course, our properties were getting some of it, but most of the properties that are affected by Hammond lead is in Whiting. So when you think about our problem, three to five million dollars, worst-case scenario, and then you look at our neighbors, Whiting, it's a lot more serious of a situation for them. It's, if you're talking five times, four or five times the amount of money it would cost us, four or five times the magnitude of the problem. So if you're in Whiting right now, you probably don't have the same options that we have in Hammond because it's only three to five million dollar problem for us. So for a city like Whiting, they may have no option but to go super fund, which is not pleasant. That's an ugly, weird situation we're dealing with, Councilman Mark. We've been working real hard on it, and I'm hoping that we get the clearance from US EPA and from IDEM to go ahead and do it ourselves. Thank you, sir.
Does anybody else have anything for the mayor? Go ahead.
Sure. That's what I'm here for.
Since before Memorial Day, fireworks have been going off.
Mm-hmm.
And my phone's been going off.
Of course.
At a loss to our left, our residents. Does the police department have a game plan on enforcement?
Being honest with you, Councilman, not really. I mean, and you can blame me if it makes it easier, but like, the thing is, this state of Indiana has tied our hands, and we sell millions of dollars with the fireworks every year, and you're supposed to blow them off on certain times, and it's just widely being ignored. And I guess, you know, I could tell my police chief and my police captains, listen, every time you hear M-80, every time you hear one of these fireworks go off, it's not legal. You go over there and, I don't know. It's just, I know it's not satisfactory, and I'm getting the same complaints you have, Councilman Mark, and I just keep bouncing people downstate saying, hey, if I had my druthers personally, I don't know how you guys feel about this, but if we were given the option to make fireworks illegal in Hammond, I would be all for it. I don't like them. I think they're disgusting, noisy, dirty, dangerous. If I were ever given the opportunity, I would do everything I could as mayor to make sure that you couldn't sell a single firework in Hammond, and you couldn't blow off a single firework in Hammond because I hate them. I think they're dangerous. However, we don't have that option because the state of Indiana took it from us. State of Indiana pumps all these fireworks out into the public, and then they're shocked that, what? You're blowing them off on a Tuesday, and you're not supposed to? I know it's, people don't like hearing me say that, Councilman Mark. I just being honest.
If a police officer wrote a citation, what is the range of the fine for that citation?
Good question. Let's see if it was here. Hey, Councilman, we have Captain Butter here. Could you come up here, Captain? Captain Patrol happens to be in the back. How convenient that is.
I'm going to say it's up to twenty-five hundred, but.
I'm not sure, Councilman. Hi, Captain Butter.
How you doing, Mayor?
Good.
Um, I believe it's something like that. It's elevated, so the first fence is usually less, but a lot of times, the problem lies in locating it. So if we're on patrol and we hear a big boom, which way did it come from? If nobody's currently out, do we follow the smoke? Is it already gone? That kind of thing. So we really rely on residents to call us.
Captain Butter, so if you saw somebody on a night where they're not supposed to be blowing it off, you guys would do something? Is that true?
I believe so. Yes, I would. Yes.
It depends on the officer?
It depends. Yeah, it's still officer discretion, but it's annoying for everybody, so I assume if they would see it, they would.
Councilman Mark, Councilman Mark, just real quick. The clerks made me aware that for the record, because the mics behind the TV, that they're not getting it on the tape player. So the way this is set up is we also need that mic back there so we can hear it in the chambers until we get all these problems fixed.
Just one last thing here.
Sure.
I get it. I understand all that, but also, because we have so many new residents from Illinois, and we have lots of people coming through the city, people don't know the state statute or the Hammond statute, if you will. And so this is more for the administration. Maybe we should be putting that in the water letter that comes out with the Waterville about when you can do it, what the, if you're cited, what, how I can define be. And maybe we even need to have police undercover swarm a certain part of town on days that are not supposed to be fireworks and start writing. If we wrote some citations, the word would get out pretty quick, and if people knew that there's only twelve days you can do this, and if they knew that the fines could be up to twenty-five hundred dollars, maybe that would help curtail some of this because without a plan, people are just doing whatever, whenever now.
I agree. Councilman Mark, I'll do something. I'll have a task corporate counsel in the law office to come up with some type of flyer we could put out to remind people. But it is one of those situations. I'm just being honest. It's one of those situations where our hands are completely tied by Indianapolis, and I wish we had some local home rule on that issue because I hate them. I think they're bad for our city. We get the environmental concerns with the noise, and then we get the litter afterwards, and then we get the added bonus of having the fire department get to show up for trash calls and roofs on fire. It affects our city more than any other city because we're the first city that you hit when you come to Indiana from Chicago, and it's just, it's chaos. I hate it. I totally agree with you, Councilman.
The fence was set on fire a couple of years ago.
I know. It's out of control.
It wasn't on one of the days it was legal. I mean, you know.
Right.
It's like a double whammy.
Yes, sir.
It's frustrating to live next to a Army vet with PTSD, people with dogs, seniors, special people who have issues, and we're not helping them. We're not doing enough for them.
I agree, Councilman Mark. I wish we had more options, but I think it's a good idea. We'll follow up with some type of flyer. I don't know if we can get them out in time through water. We'll figure out some way to get them out.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Katrina Alexander.
Um, Mayor, I sent you a message just recently, just a little while ago. If you can check that for me.
Sure.
Um, and then we'll hopefully can get something resolved regarding, it's regarding Juneteenth.
It's.
Regarding Juneteenth.
The what? Juneteenth, thank you. Okay. Thank you. You know, Juneteenth was great. I didn't love the fact that we weren't in the brand-new part of MLK Park, though, and Councilman Barry and Councilwoman Katrina and myself talked about that, and I talked to our staff. It's like, we spent five million dollars on this park. It's gorgeous, and we're sitting here on the old end that wasn't fixed up. It made no sense, but it was electrical issue that will be resolved before next year. And I'm not sure if that's what you're talking about, Councilwoman. I wasn't thrilled with that, though, when I got there. At first, when I pulled up, I was coming off Tapper like, where is everybody? And I saw everybody on the other end. It's like, we'll fix that next year.
Yeah, it can get better next year, you know, bigger and better.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? Mayor, I just wanted, I should have said it last week or the last meeting when everybody came in chambers, but I wanted to thank you, your staff, the clerk's office, and all the council people for the last sixteen months. I mean, we only missed one meeting, and it was just because there was a storm and the power was out.
Yeah.
The speeches you give and the IT department for putting these on Zoom. I mean, I literally sat there where, you know, my iPad wouldn't work, and I'm watching these meetings on Zoom on my phone, and my phone's ringing off the hook, but some way we managed to get through this and like with this problem here with the mic, I know. get through this. And like, with this problem here with the mic, I know I've been talking Megan about maybe budgeting, because we have to make some upgrades for the chambers anyway
Sure.
next year to, for the, you know, the new rules. But I just wanted to thank you and the clerk and all of my colleagues for not missing a beat during this whole pandemic, and that's all I got.
All right. Nice to see you guys. Thank you all.
Item number four, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Motion to accept the minutes from June 14, 2021. Do you place on file, please?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson was the first one I heard. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Hearing none. Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, the minutes passed, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number five, approve all claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Move that we pay claims dated 6/15/2021 and ending with claims dated 6/23/2021. Claim number 2863 through claim 3109 in the amount of $6,876,177.57.
Second.
Motion's been made to accept the claims as written by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
I want to amend the claims to include claim number 3110 in the amount of $6,911.26.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made to amend the claims by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
This claim is for, under the facade rebate program, being paid out of that fund, and it's for P.H. Mueller and Sons Incorporated at 418 Sibley Street.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick roll call on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed on the amendment. Clerk Golick roll call on the claims as amended.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, claims passed, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings, there are none. Item number seven, communications. Does anybody have any communications? Does anyone have any communications? Hearing none, communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
As council as a whole, I'd like to bring out ordinance 21-22 for a third and final passage.
Council as a whole will be bringing out 2122. Is there any other committee reports?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I would like to report on the Capitol Improvements Board meeting of June 21, 2021. We voted to approve resolution number 2021-01 to establish electronic communication policies. We approved $199,700 for Kennedy Avenue Downtown Hessville Reconstruction Design Agreement. We approved $92,000 for design engineering for 177th Street Expo from 2,900 to the 3,300 blocks. We approved $74,578 for Florida Avenue roadway and utility design. We approved $62,820 for J.F. Mahoney Drive reconstruction. That concluded our business for the evening. The next meeting will be July 6, and the time will be, is to be determined. Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
Yes, I would like to continue with the community crime watch report. The community watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be, the next meeting will be in August. Edison Community Watch will meet in September. Hessville Crime Watch will meet in August. Irving Community Watch will meet in September. And the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch has a meeting coming up on July 8 at the Whiting Mascot Hall of Fame. That's because St. Joe's is closed right now, and Chief Andy Short will be the guest speaker at that meeting. I would also like to announce that the City of Hammond Security Light Program is back for 2021. Qualified applicants will receive a free security light. You must own and reside in your Hammond home. You must provide proof of homeownership and provide a valid driver's license. Applications will be taken in person only from July 6 through 9 only. That will be here at City Hall on the third floor in room 312. Quantities are limited, so first come, first served. If there are any seniors in the city, please contact me, and I will personally bring a, an application to your home for completion. My phone number is 937-9774. Piggybacking on Councilman Kalwinski and the fireworks, fireworks are illegal in the city of Hammond until tomorrow, June 29, 30, July 1, 2nd, 3rd, 5th, 6th, 7th, 8th, and 9th. They will be legal from 5:00 PM until 2 hours after sunset, which is roughly about 10 o'clock at night. On the 4th of July, fireworks will be legal from 10:00 AM to midnight. And for future reference, the fireworks will be permissible on December 31 from 10:00 AM until 1:00 AM on January 1, if anybody wants to make note of that. I also want to announce that discharging firearms in the city of Hammond is strictly prohibited. So if you can't wait for the fireworks and you want to shoot off a gun, remember what goes up must come down. And we had a fatality in our city a couple of years ago, that a young man passed away from some idiot shooting the gun up in the air, and the bullet came down and struck this young man in the head. So please, please, during this holiday, we certainly have many reasons to celebrate the freedoms that we have in this country, but just don't be stupid about it. Look out for your neighbors. Look out for your families. And as usual, if you see anything suspicious going on in the city, please do not hesitate to call 911. Be patient with the information that they're asking for, because they need to paint a picture for the police officer that's going to respond to your call. So please be patient with the questions, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have anything under committee reports? Anybody else have anything under committee reports? Hearing none, committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinance third, third and reading and final passage.
Ordinance number 21-22. The petitioners are Hammond Redevelopment Commission. The sponsors are Councilman Torres and Councilman Tyler. Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Hammond authorizing the City of Hammond, Indiana to issue one or more series of its economic development revenue bonds and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. 415 Sibley, a Three Corners project, and Bank Calumet, a Northwest Indiana project.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for a third and final passage of ordinance 21-22.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption by Councilman Torres, seconded by Bill Emerson, uh, Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
This ordinance is gonna renovate Calumet Bank into apartments and commercial space, and also 415 Sibley, the construction of a new building for apartment, and also real tail, tail space. Thank you, Mr. President.
Does anybody else have any discussion? Does anybody else have any further discussion? Does anybody else have any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, the ordinance passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 21-23, and sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez, an ordinance to appropriate funds in the hotel, motel, innkeeper's tax fund for the Hammond Park Department.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I move for first and second reading of 2123 with a refer to council as a whole, with a committee meeting on July 12 at 5:15 PM. Also, a public hearing on July 12.
Is there a, the motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez for first and second reading, as explained on 2121.
2123.
I'm sorry, 2123, and seconded by Councilman Torres. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
This is an annual transfer of money from the innkeeper's tax of $29,089.65 to the Hotel Motel Fund. That is to be used, the funds will be used for special events promotions. And again, that amount is $29,089.65.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick roll call on the motion, please.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, eight in favor, zero opposed, with one absent.
Item B, ordinance number 21-24. The petitioner is the Hammond Redevelopment Commission, and it's sponsored by Councilman Torres. An ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514. An ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use class as amended for property commonly known as 5551, 5553 Claude Avenue.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for a first and second reading, refer to council as a whole, and have a committee meeting on June 12, or rather, July 12, 5:15.
Second.
Does, is there a intent to consider attached to that, too?
Is there a what?
An intent, an intent to consider for July 12 as well.
An intent?
An intent to consider. Are you making, there needs to be an intent to consider on this motion, too, and then, will you make that motion as part of your motion?
Yes, I'll make a, make a motion to intend to consider it on July 12.
So, the motion's been made.
Second.
For, by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson, to have this to go in front of the council as a whole on July 12 at 5:15 PM with an intent to consider added to the agenda. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
This ordinance is to create a community park in the neighborhood of Jacob Square, which is northeast of Thornton and Claude. It's part of the plan of the rede, the downtown redevelopment plan. And I'm sure it'll be a plus to the neighborhood, create a recreational area for the kids in that neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 11, resolutions, there are none. Item number 12, new and unfinished business. Does anyone have any new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
As before, I have the COVID numbers from last month to this month. From June 28 today, for 46320, we have an additional 44 cases. For 46323, we have an additional 25 cases. 4632, I'm sorry, 46327 was 25 cases. 46323, 77 cases. 46324, 74 cases. 46394, 29 cases. That's 249 cases from last month to this month. I also have a vaccination report as well. For 46320, we have 36.8% of residents fully vaccinated. That's 4,132. For 46327, we have 34.3% of residents in that area. That's 3,265. For 46324, 39.4 are fully vaccinated. That's 7,091. For 46323, 38.7% are fully vaccinated. That's 7,216. 46394 is 43.1%. It's 4,690. That's 7,091. For 46323, 38.7% are fully vaccinated. That's 7,216. 46394 is 43.1%. It's 4,699 residents that are fully vaccinated. As we continue to fight through this pandemic and the loss of Sergeant Sawyer, I just continue to encourage our residents to stay safe, get vaccinated. We want to build those numbers up. Our surrounding cities like Munster and Highland, their vaccination numbers are higher. Do your research. I'm not saying go get your vaccination. I'm asking people to actually do their research on a vaccination. It's your choice. But to get those numbers up so that we can fully get out of this thing. So, I do want to continue to encourage the residents to do so. And as we do enter into the 4th of July season, like Councilwoman Vines said, let's be safe. Let's be wise as we're putting off fireworks, not shoot up guns because bullets do have to come down. For instance, one year I had a bullet come down into my car. So, we want to just be safe and make sure we're doing things the proper way.
Thank you. I know we've all received a message from Rise NWI regarding a meeting to hear more about their literature and tactics to educate the citizens on the vaccine.
Yes.
And what, did the mayor say with city employees, it's running about 40%, correct?
Correct. So, again, even looking at the city employees versus the residents, we still want to get those numbers up. Encouraging, I don't know if it was something, I know a resident had asked if we can put a billboard up, you know, encouraging people to get the vaccine, get some yard signs or something. But just to get more information out there. I know we have the meeting that's going to come up to talk about the vaccinations and information that we need to put out in the different communities from all walks of life so that they know the difference. I'm fully vaccinated, but yet I still will wear my mask because I want to continue to be safe. And that's what I just encourage people to do.
Thank you. Was that it? I mean, I think everybody on this council is pretty much fully vaccinated, and we don't have keys and ink pens and paper clips sticking, clinging to us like we saw on TV. So, I think we can all agree that it's safe and to encourage the residents to get vaccinated. Is there anything else on the new and unfinished business? Anyone have anything else on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none.
One more thing. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I thought Councilman Tyler might have chimed in. Hammond Day is this weekend. They will be having a parade from Columbia to Kenwood to Tapper to May Street, back to Columbia, finishing off at MLK Park with a big old celebration. Again, encouraging people to still be safe even though we're outdoors. And then I know that there's some picture that's going to be scheduled for the Hammond High before they close down. That's scheduled at about 2:00 PM, so I wanted the residents to know that as well.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Does anyone else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none. New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression, we had one person sign up. He's no longer here, and we have no one on Zoom, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made by Councilman, Councilwoman Alexander, seconded by Councilman Torres. Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Everybody have a safe 4th of July.